Which position is that?
This is the transplant sitting part of your system.
We have the board, I think, committee here. I thought this meeting had been planned more for the City of Placa. Board. Um, we'll start with invitation and Mr. Plaid, you can kind of do the, I meant, um, give the invitation and Mr. Rawl, maybe you can play the lead.
Chaco Norbury is on the line, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's right, now you're there, but you want to do the invitation, please.
Absolutely.
Please stand.
Father, we thank you once again for this day, we thank you for how good you've been. You brought us together again for another planning session. We pray God for the wisdom of your guidance to be upon the heads of your people. Pray God that you would show us what to do and how to do and all that we undergo to do for the city. We pray God for your will to be done, your kingdom come, your glory be with you. Best to thy people in Jesus' name, amen.
Thanks, Ben.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just quick, we have the draw call for it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Mr. Deluge.
Here.
Ms. Owens.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Rawl.
Here.
Vice Chair Barnes is en route for the record. And Chair Kilibr.
Here.
We have a form, sir.
Thank you. So, does the appeal procedure next part of communication? Any person wishing to appeal any decision made by the planning board with respect to any matter, any matter considered at such meeting will make a record of the proceedings and for purposes may need to ensure that verbatim record of the proceeding is made. Which group record includes the testimony, evidence upon which the appeal is to be based, uh, part of statute two eight fifteen, at zero one zero five. Um, approval of the minutes. Mr. Chairman, I approve that we can approve the minutes for my speaker.
Second.
Thank you. But in second, all those that pay their stay up.
Aye.
Aye.
When it passes. Um, for public comments, we go ahead and forward to public comments. Anybody here who wishes to speak to what we got going on today or anything above that, they're on next. Seeing none, we'll move on past that to our regular purpose of business. Um. Ms. Wall, you will speak to PV case twenty three, the action report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Ray Dorton. Um, this is a request to amend future land use map for thirty seventy seven point six six acres from the City of Placa Industrial, Residential Low RL and Commercial Con to City of Placa Recreational and rezone from City of Placa with light industrial M one, multiple family residential R three and central commercial C three to City of Placa Land Unit Development slash Recreation Open Space for PD ROS. The owner is a crystal colored resort, it's something you guys have seen before, I believe. Um. The intent is to construct an RV resort. In conjunction, there's our, in conjunction with an existing zoned and land used property that's a ten acres to the north of this proposed site. Well, the applicant is here, I believe that she will gain a lot more than their presentation. They're ready to do so.
If the applicant will step forward or state the name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chris Potts, Director of Engineering for PD Pro. Uh, address, it was three five three zero northwest ninety third street in Oakdale, Florida. Um, sitting in for Kathy Eball today, um, we've recently, you can tell our presentation.
So, you can bring it up right now.
So, let me introduce, uh, we're here for the proposal code RV park, a upper end of large scale compliance amendment as well as a rezoning application.
Mr. Chair, now, on average, cutting, would you like to move us first?
Yes. And then you sit off and do it.
Yeah.
So, the applicant is in free development and PD Pro is agent. Um, fortunately, Kathy had a word to say come off today, so I am standing in her place. Um, so just to overview the presentation, we'll go over, uh, over the project background, the development plan, some pros, features within the RV resort, uh, concurrency for seating standards as well as planning consistency. Um, one item that is not required by code that we felt was very informal is we had a neighborhood workshop. Um, or we made the application and we'll go over the results of it as well as questions that came up during that. And then at the end of the presentation, if there's any question from the board, being more happy to answer them. Um, so from the existing land use, uh, property is residential low as well as commercial and industrial. So, currently has three existing land uses on it, which we're requesting to change to recreational support the proposed development. Uh, which is consistent with the surrounding properties of, as Letha mentioned, with an existing recreational to the north. Which is currently in our reserve as well. Uh, for the zoning change, we're going to go from R three, C three and one to request to recreational open space with a PD, PUD overlay. The overlay district will set the standards for the development moving forward. And then the recreational open space, uh, will handle the uses that are proposed on the property. So, for the PD proposing forty sites in addition to thirty rustic camping sites and a component of non-residential amenities. Um, available area for the site, as you can see, there's quite a bit of wetland on it, it's just under fifty percent or fifty acres, which is below under twenty nine percent of the property. And then we're proposing a maximum of fifty thousand square feet. Um, that's not going to be one structure, that'll be various structures throughout the RV resort, which could be a welcome center, a clubhouse, laundry and that facilities. Um, potentially a convenience store, which will be cargo, either the clubhouse or the welcome center. And then the recreational facilities, which, uh, pools and other right, uh, recreational activities like people, um, ports and art escapes and all that. Um, proposing three different sizes of RV, uh, spaces. All minimum thirty five foot wide, varying lengths depending on the type of RV. Um, so we have Super Bowl crews, which are really much, much larger RVs. Uh, general pool through sites as well and back in. Uh, the rustic sites will have no direct transport, so in other words, the southern area that you see that's in the orange hatch, um, will have a small, the proposal sounds like a small parking area. The rustic camper will go and park their vehicle there and then hike back into where they like to camp. We'll have some various sites designated to that, the idea is that it's more of a natural feeling camping area. Um, and then we're proposing to set aside around twenty one other half acres probably, which will go into a preserve, um, which will be in perpetuity. Um, working with that with St. John's as well as the city to set that aside. Um, and then for recreational activities will be both active and passive. Some passive are trails, you know, hiking, that sort of thing, and then active will be some sort of court or something more traditional. The development will be connected to public utilities, uh, both water and wastewater. So, every RV site will have public hookups. Um, you know, we'll get into it a little more, but one of the questions that came up in the neighborhood workshop was regarding the existing location. Um, and they passed through those lines. And discussing that with the utility department, the location itself is actually underserved. So, by adding the development, it'll actually improve the capacity of the location, the function of the pumps and the overall systems for the city, so the development will actually have a positive impact on the utilities there, at least on the wastewater side. Um, relying, you know, we're, uh, can make sure that with RV parks, when I vary minimal lighting at night, get a nice feel of the night sky. So, there'll be lighting around most of the structures, but then throughout the campsite, there'll be minimal lighting, just preserve the natural feel of the campsite itself and allow people to, uh, feel like they're out there camping and not in a parking lot, like everywhere. Um, so these are some of the features and general architectural styles that are being, uh, thought about for the RV park. Um, you know, there's just RV sites, um, in many centers with the pavilions, uh, active have, uh, recreation down on the bottom right, um, boardwalks. So, we're hoping to connect some boardwalks through the conservation area to add to nature field, passive recreation, also to give access to St. John's River and that to the marina. Um, with the hopes of tying in all the existing uses that are out there. So, the project features, um, as I mentioned, we have what we're firing on twenty one acres, which is roughly seventy one percent of the property that's going to be converted. Um, which I know is a big component of the city's comprehensive plan. Um, and then, you know, the campground is going to be utilizing a lot of the natural features. And the pictures to the right are taken from the site itself. Um, so we have some aerial views as well as some ground shots of the existing topography and vegetative features. So, from a concurrency standpoint, um, the city has ample capacity. From a roadway and utility standpoint, um, you know, the stormwater and the recreational meet land development requirements, and because it's an RV resort and it's not permanent residence, there are no impacts to public school facilities. Um, RV resorts have very low impact rivers. Um, so based on the peak, peak of trips, you're looking at roughly eleven trips per day, um, from a peak, uh, peak standpoint, which is very minimal. Um, compared to residential subdivision, you know, you're looking at probably three times that for just a residential subdivision. And then the, the concurrency components of the, of the impacts of this development on the city's water resource. So, going to the planning consistency, um, you know, a, a big policy and goal of the city's comprehensive plan is to use, is to use the existing topography and features of the property to preserve the environmental sensitivities of the city as well as maintaining the environmental support for the St. John River. And one thing that recreation does is by changing the land use to recreation, it'll achieve those goals for the city. Um. Recreation has low impacts on environmental, uh, environmental sensitive areas. Um, you know, this policy here is based off, um, activity based facilities, an RV resort meets that. Um, just being a RV resort itself as well as providing amenities for that area. And then the P, PUD overlay sets standards for the development, um, as far as the maximum density, the size of the RV space. The size of the RV spaces and the uses. So again, the R PUD requirements are protect the city's environmentally sensitive areas. So with the requested change, the recreation and open space zoning allows for campground and that's what this RV resort falls under. And then the planning and development identifies specific standards which comply with the city's county artists. So the proposed land use change complies with all these policies, objectives and goals for the conflict. Mostly focusing on protecting the environment. Provisions for public services and facilities as well as provide economic development. So this brings in a lot of visitors who will support the local economy by commerce. And so again, the biggest focus for this change is it really achieves the conservation goal and protection of sensitive elements. You know, we're setting aside that seventy-one percent of the property for resource protection as far as the left hand goes and preserving you know, the St. John River and stormwater components as well as other pools. So we had a neighborhood shop beginning of February. It was while attended. And these are just some of the general ideas. We went over the project. Went over the RV types, operations, utilities, you know, market reservations. Dealing with their native and invasive species, the materials that are on the property. And as we go through if this gets approved and we move forward into the site plan and development of it. One requirement that St. John will have is to eliminate a lot of invasive species from plants and other items. So that'll be part of the condition of that as we move forward.
Excuse me, when you say St. John, you're talking about St. John, who are many?
That is correct. And then one item that came up quite a bit was impacting roadways and utility capacity. We've, part of our application is we provided a traffic study for the RV resort. And every resort will have minimal impacts to the roadways specifically off-site. And no roadway improvements are required based on those impacts. And then from the utility standpoint. There was concern about that location that's on-site. Capacity and those sort of things and it will actually improve those conditions because the location is currently underutilized. So we're here to request or approve the large-scale companies of amendment to change from residential low, commercial and industrial recreation. And change the rezoning from R three, C three and one to recreational open space with a PUD overlay. So with that, if we're having a question, we'd be more happy to.
Thank you. Anybody on the board that have any questions?
We've got an RV. And I just wanted to know what kind of rental the summer are you still going to have? Are you going to have like month to month? Are you going to have? Are you going to allow month to month?
So there will be different stages. You know, there's as far as you're referring to month to month.
Long term.
They'll be, yes, they'll be allowed to have a long-term stay, but they won't be a permanent resident. So the goal is a lot of the snowbirds will now for six, eight months. And so that's kind of typical range for certain residents.
Are they going to leave their camper and go away for six months? Because typically I, I go and I'm, you know, I'll look through RV parks before we go and rent them. And I don't like the long-term because we're short-term. We go in for weeks at a time, you know, a couple of weeks here, a weekend here. And it just the overnighters, the long-term ones that get to stay and leave and then they end up putting a little shades down over their wheels. They get kind of shady looking, you know, and it just brings in back like baggage that I don't know where.
Yes, so the intention of it is that you'll have a variety of residents. And you'll have night and day, you know, day-to-day resident as well as a little bit of extended stay. However, if they leave the campground, you know, it's not a permanent residence, so they have to take their RV. So the RVs won't be able to stay and pay.
It'll be fun. It'll be, I mean, staying up can be fun.
Yeah, it feels good if you want to speak, speak to the body, speak nicely and then directly.
Matt McDaniel with Crystal Code, two twenty-one, Crystal Code Drive. So our goal is to have the place look nice and it'll be a very expensive development. And it's all about keeping the level up. To build something new like we're building, you know, in this marketplace. So we'll have all kinds of restrictions on what people can keep outside of their RVs. Because it just hurts our whole development, particularly for those people who are coming in for a week or two. You know, we don't want those people to feel like they're, you know, pulling into you know, where somebody else lives. But, but our primary target customer is going to be the snowbird. And they generally bring their RV down, you know, four, six months, eight months. And then they leave and take their RV with them. So that's really our target.
Kind of going off of what Dawn had said, we camped when my son was young and we would go and scout in campgrounds. And the ones that we didn't like were the ones that had the seasonal workers. And I mean, with Georgia Pacific and all that, people do come in and stay. Now, it's not my concern today because I don't have a little kid. You know, I mean, people aren't set up there to work a shutdown. But I mean, they're going to be able to do that and stay for whether it's a three-month shutdown, six months. I mean.
So yeah, if they, the intention though is that they won't be able to receive mail or any of that sort of component. So you may have some of the seasonal or the construction workers that gone by for six to eight months. You know, that really is not the goal of the RV resort. But there may be a few of those just because of proximity.
Right, it is.
But one component of that is that they can't get any mail or any of that. So they'll have a, it's not for permanent residents.
I mean, with four hundred slots, I mean, we can't, Salt Springs has the four hundred plus. And I believe campground is what it was. And it really wasn't that bad. You think four hundred. It got crowded, but I'm talking after nine eleven. Day that everybody was camping, you know, so I mean, it doesn't take much to fill one up.
So, yes, so one thing to keep in mind is that four hundred is the maximum density goal. So when we come through with the site plan, we may not actually hit that level because of stormwater and roadways and that sort of thing. And so, yeah, it can get congested. However, the goal from developers is to not pack them in. And so each space will be fairly spaced, rooming for your camping equipment or hiking table, that sort of thing. So the goal is not to cram them all in, make it feel like a little home park. And with the amenities, you know, you know, and the natural features of the site is just kind of spreading all around.
Good luck. Pete Coverman, from country.
I have a question.
You have any, are you going to have any like water sports, like boat ramps, boat dock, anything like that or?
So we are going through a process with EP to have a birth dock. Part of this property that's going to be attached to the marina. And then that boardwalk's coming through. So the intention is to have, you know, access. So you can see it up in the top right corner.
Okay.
And that's just a small section.
Yeah.
But the idea is that it would be connected to the marina.
So a camper can throw out a boat and break and then cool.
Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, I guess I should find about, um, my share for a second.
Go ahead.
Don Holmes, for your record. So I, I just have a couple of questions for clarification. Four hundred sites and fifty rustic sites. But did I see you were using for concurrency comparison purposes, eleven trips per day?
Yes.
Four hundred and fifty sites and only eleven travel trips a day? That's great. Where do those numbers come from?
Eleven per site?
No, no.
In totality.
I, I have a question about that. I'll just, my question is the source of that, that information at four hundred and fifty sites, then basically you're saying that only roughly what? Fifteen, twenty percent of them are going to have a travel going in and out? No less than that, I'm sorry, wait.
Fifty percent.
Five percent?
About ten.
Ten would be, ten on four hundred would be forty trips a day. So you're talking about way, way less than ten percent of those sites would be having any travel at all. One, even one. So I, I would like to know the source of that number. And then I'd also like to know Lisa, what the capacity level of the road is. And at what, at what number of trips per day would that road, that's a one-way in, out road, I guess. Unless you would go down to the industrial area, is that right? Can you get out on the?
Yes.
Over road.
And then the second question is over the years, we've certainly heard a lot of good intentions. A lot of folks come up and tell us what their hope to see achieved. But we found that the only thing that we can count on is what's in the pub regulation. So when you say your target audience is the, is the folks coming out of snowbirds who typically stay six months or whatever. My question is, is there a maximum length of stay? And incorporating the rules of the pub?
So to answer the traffic question. So we submitted a traffic study, those were formed by a traffic engineer. The basis of that is the IT manual, which is the International Transportation of Engineering Manual, which identifies the type of development. And they've done a big study for over twenty or thirty years of how each use impacts the roads and what those type of roadway impacts are based off of average daily trips. Peak PM trips, trips and peak AM trips. So those eleven trips per day are the peak trips. And that's what townings, cities and DOT look at for the impact, not the average daily trips. RV resort is by nature a place where people come and they stay. And then they hardly, you know, they're there for all the activities. And then their single car that they have is used periodically to go wherever they need to go. So compared to like a residential subdivision with the higher peak. That's why the curbs are so low because the type of use actually had a low impact based off years and years of data from the engineering side of studying roadways and that sort of thing. And the full engineering study, traffic study was submitted in the package. And based on that, you know, there, and discussion with DOT based off you know, the project impacts, DOT themselves determined that no roadway improvements are required as well from our analysis comfort road. Has sufficient capacity and is on and handled the RV parks. But again, when we go through the site plan and process, we'll go through that in depth to see. As well as DOT. And if there are at some point determine that roadway improvements are required, you know, they'll be all flushed out. Currently type of lead process. So this, this, this request we're going through right now is just to set up entitlements for the proposed development itself. The site plan will get into finer details of if any improvements are required and what type of improvements are required. But right now, based on the traffic study, no improvement required.
The, the drive or the entrance to this park. When we're looking at that, at this plan there, it's just before the curve, right about where the bump location and all that is, is that, is that the idea is going to be right there?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So it'll, you know, that roadway intersection will be improved based on the driveway and that sort of thing.
Okay, so will this at all be attached to the, the RV park that we've already approved on the other side of the road?
So it is the same developer. I don't know if you guys have determined that they could use the amenities in between each other. But right now, you know, they're kind of, they're actually being viewed as two separate RV resorts. They would be shit, they would be able to. And state your name and address.
Matt McDaniel, two twenty-one, Crystal Code. So when, when we got, Chris can speak to this, when we got involved with Kelly and the project. The civil engineering, there are bits of questions about why isn't that not developed first? When JD Pro got involved, they looked at the plans and said, we have to really start from, you know, square one. And so there is a process of reviewing all of those plans and it is definitely our goal to do the forty sites first. And the answer is yes, those sites would have access to all of the amenities of the larger project and then both will have access to all of the amenities of Crystal Code. You know, the restaurant and the bar and the marina and so forth.
Okay, to the part of, if I remember correctly, when we approved the other part of the resort that was within the entrance off of Crystal Code or off Comfort Road, excuse me. To come in there to not tie up the road going back to the and well, not the industrial, but the towns. Am I correct when you said that?
Yeah, when we were having to come off.
Well, I thought they were having to come off of Comfort Road, you know, to come back into that area so that they didn't tie up the residence, went back residential sector. So tie, I mean, tying those together. And I'm not opposed to what you're presenting, I'm just, my mind's thinking.
So, so I guess to just back it one step too. So the original forty units to the north. Those rising engineering plans and architectural plans have been submitted. And so they're currently under review by the city and county. And it does have an entrance like you're talking about, but the board approved. Now for the southern property, right now, that's just a placement where we were envisioning the connection. But again, you know, those finer details will be worked out in the site plan process. So the entrance could be moved, you know, could shift either way, depending on how it all comes together.
And then just like Mr. Holmes, I've seen people come in here and promises a moon and delivers a doghouse. And, you know, so that's, that's what I'm mentioning. Just asking these questions while I'm asking.
It's understandable. So there's, there's kind of two components of it. One is the engineering standards that have to be met by code by the land development regulations. And those are controlled, for example, your access, your connection, roadway improvements based on that information. Now, the architectural features, we actually provided in the PUD standards. Architectural standards, designs for the park. So it is embedded in the PUD standards that we have submitted.
So is it put into the P, the best?
Yes, that's correct.
That's what I, that's what I was wondering. Ms. Thomas?
Well, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Question, if you don't mind.
Okay, go ahead. Hang on, Ms. Thomas, I'm sorry.
I asked the question, maximum length of stay provided in the development plan. And I guess as an adjunct to that, are any of these units going to be park models that you own and that are set up on-site?
You want to answer that? You guys want to state what you want?
Yeah, just state your name. Matt McDaniel. Yeah, most of the new first class RV resorts offer park models as, you know, part of the offering. Cause a lot of their clientele have RVs and they may have family members and others that do not have RVs. So if you, you know, look at all the major ones around Florida now, park models are a part of it. But the, those park models are very expensive. You know, you're, you're looking in a range of.
very expensive, you know, you're, you're, you're looking in a range of hundred and seventy-five to two hundred and twenty-five dollars a night, so they're, they're not.
What, what percentage of your four hundred units are, is there a limitation in your PUD development plan as to what percentage of your four hundred sites will have, do, do our models on them?
Yeah, do we have that? That's.
Mr. Holmes, can I ask you to kind of get to the microphone?
Sure, yeah, I'm sorry. My question was, does the, see, if I understand it correctly, you're approving the development plan, not just the PUD overlay, is that correct? So the development plan basically is your, for lack of a better term, it's, it's your whatever rules and regulations that you can, you can enforce in terms of the way this project proceeds. It's not just the PUD overlay, planning development overlay, but you're actually approving the development plan, if I'm understanding correctly. So, uh, is that right, Lisa?
Yes.
So my question is, does the development plan include a limitation on the length of stay? And secondly, what, does it include any limitation on the number percentage of the four hundred sites that can have park models on them that are owned by the developer?
We do not have a number of park models that are maximal or minimum, but there is a limit to the stay. Uh, the stay was, I believe it's nine months is the maximum stay that we have in the PUD standards. So, yeah, so the city manager is correct, or in the word tonight is the PUD standards for the development and not the development plan. So the PUD standards are identifying the rubric for what we have to go forward with from the site planning standpoint.
So PUD development plan.
Right, so it, it's kind of a it's a little bit of a play on the words, is the PUD sets the standard, which period of, right, well, the, the PUD itself sets the standards for what the developer has to meet, in other words, if the, you know, there is a limitation on the amount of stay, there's architectural standard, there's, don't worry, SC units and that sort of thing.
Excuse me just a minute. Ms. Thomas, don't we have a note in the city about the, uh, number of days somebody can stay? Or did we do away with that?
I have not been able to find that in our code. I have not been able to find that in our code.
Most campgrounds are like fourteen days.
But I, I, I'm not just talking about campgrounds, I'm just talking about in general. Didn't we, Ms. Thomas, didn't we, didn't we have something on that?
Chairman, I, off the top of my head, I, I know that you have placed maximum lengths of stay in particularly the, as I recall now, the PUD agreement that was approved for the ten-acre site that's north of this. Uh, I, I, I can't tell you that I recall whether or not your ordinance is specifying a maximum length of stay in RV park. I just, I don't, I'm not saying yes, I'm not saying no, I don't recall off the top of my head. I could try to go look at the code real quick and tell you if I can find something, but I don't recall.
Well, I thought we had, uh, we had a discussion, and I think that was with the, um, Ben Brackus. I know that, I know that's probably a different thing.
That's a different ballgame.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, just on the, um, section in the code, it's it's called temporary placement for recreational vehicles, and it says be on site for fewer than one hundred and eighty consecutive days.
Yeah, but if it's a park model, I guess.
Then it's, then it's.
I think a park model, when you say park model, Mr. Holmes, I think that that would be, uh, I mean, I, I would believe in, in my mind, well, you're kind of sort of, but I believe it'd be a short, just in what I, in my knowledge of RVing, and, um, I think that that would be just, in short term, every RV park I've ever been in has park models. And the people use them on the weekends and stuff like that, but I'm just, you know, I don't think we're much recovered everywhere.
And, and, and I don't disagree that you have a point of view and an opinion, but I relate to the fact that I can't stop being a lawyer just because I'm gonna be city manager for the next five weeks. What's not in the development plan doesn't exist. So your, your thought may be, well, park models you bring in and you take out. But if I'm hearing it correctly, there's nothing to stop there from being four hundred park models set up, rented for nine months at a time to folks, and then that's, if that's what's in there.
They are giving a proposal of about thirty percent of the site would be parking.
Well, I asked if there was a limitation, and he's, and they said no, so you're saying now it's thirty percent?
Yes, sir, Miss Thomas.
Okay. So again, so the confusion with park models, the, it is an RV that's permanently on the property. But again, it is a rental RV for users who do not have an RV but want to come and stay at a RV resort. Or those who are staying in the RV resort and then have family members who come and visit them. It gives them a place to stay as opposed by on the property. But again, it's, you know, there's no address to it, so it can't be a permanent residence for somebody. Um, so yes, thank you, Lisa, but I, I spoke on that, we do have a maximum of thirty percent of.
We were six to eight months for length of stay, if I understood right a minute ago, but now we're talking nine months.
Yeah, so the, the typical range that we're, that they're shooting for for snowbirds is six to eight months. But the maximum stay for one person with this guy is, um, to cover, because there's kind of a little bit of a range for some snowbirds. Some stay a little longer, some stay a little less, so we were hoping to get a little bit on the and a little extra time just in case some stay for eight months and a few days.
How do you determine the snowbird? I mean, I got my different.
Let's not bring it out.
We're six to eight, then based on being called something else, you get nine?
No, 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 so the overall maximum stay is nine months. So regardless of any, uh, resident coming in is nine months. Um, but the thought process is, is that most, uh, people who come and visit RV resorts from the north stay for six to eight months, depending on how they travel on their season.
So nine months.
So that's the, that's the reason why we're requesting the nine months.
So, what, what, how, how many short-term? I mean, because I've got people that camp, and it's like, people need campground, you know, camp bikes around here. So there's gonna be enough to where people that are just coming through, coming to a fishing tournament, coming for a couple of weeks to hang out, within the availability.
Yeah, so they, they came around, just first like, just like everybody else is, you know, first home for certain. So there, there'll be a variation of just capacity, um, and the hope is with the amenities in the site, you know, it'd be very attractive. So the, the goal is to have quite a bit of turnover as well as, uh, you know, accommodating some of the longer stay.
I'm, I'm just going with order, you know, versus the no longer, you know, to accommodate people for just that means that.
Yeah, really just based off, you know, first home for certain.
Please state your name and address.
David Daniel with M three Development. I live in Mayland, Florida. Okay, so to address the question about, uh, timeframes, uh, when we were working on our, our development, uh, in in another community, that question came up. And, uh, in the course of, of our research as well as the city staff's research, they actually found that, uh, every city that they called that had an existing RV ordinance had no length of stay limitation, and they decided to go ahead and, and go with that. Obviously, there's a risk, and obviously what you all are concerned about is it becoming a place that people actually live at. And, um, and I do realize that we need to be, we need to be concerned about that sort of thing. But with the amount of money that we spent already owning the real estate that we have, uh, the intended budget of twenty, twenty-five million dollars, uh, that likelihood will not be in our lifetimes, uh, or your kids probably. So I have all expectations, this is gonna be a first-class resort, that is gonna be a something that people of the latter will be proud of, uh, well into the future. We also learned an interesting thing with regard to the park models as well as, uh, stays. Uh, obviously for us, if short-term stay is the demand, we're gonna want to rent to those folks. They're gonna be paying more money than people who stay for a week or two weeks or a month. And so clearly, the incentive for us is gonna be short-term stays. But we went and visited with the developer of a Margaritaville RV resort over in the city of, uh, Auburndale. And, uh, they, they told us a piece of information that I'm still shocked about, I'm not even sure I'm remembering the information because it was so shocking. I think he said something like forty percent of their weekend stays were people who lived within a ten-mile radius. And I was like, they're like, using it like a country club. And so I'm, we're expecting that that be an element of our business, uh, a, a regular part of our business. And, uh, again, the, the intention here is, and again, I can't speak for other developers, uh, we are land developers, we've been doing this, we've been in this business for an awful long time. Uh, in the town of Newbury where we're building residential communities, we have a seven-hundred-lot subdivision, biggest that that community's ever had by about five times. And we are, we are doing it, we're building lots right now, I'm about to get a plat on, uh, the tenth for a hundred and thirty-four lots. So the answer is, we don't, we actually try to talk less than we do, we do more than we talk. So our intention is, is to deliver what we're talking about. Uh, as to whether we have absolute control over, we also know the economy can change, we'll probably pull back and wait for the economy to get back. But our expectation is, is to be in this for the long haul, and, uh, by the way, thank you very much for, for hearing me out.
Well, I'm gonna say this, this is my personal opinion, is that okay, Ms. Thomas, if I say it's my personal opinion? I'm gonna go ahead and carry my personal opinion.
Yes, sir.
Um, I know Mr. Redford very well, um, I, 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 you know, I see the, what he's done with the marina out there, and I've seen the work that he's put in and passion he has for that, as a, is in my personal opinion, I have no doubt that it's gonna be a top-rated venue, but in, in saying that, still, you know, y'all keep saying long haul, long haul, long haul, and you've been stating about our children, and my children, and I've been here for six generations. My children are still here, my grandchildren are still here, and I plan on, I plan on my family being here as much, probably as much as the board do. And, and, and all good intentions are put into things. Um, there's always a chance that somebody will come in here and say, well, we like that, we're gonna give you a lot of money, and if we don't buckle up and button up everything that's on here, that's my, that's what I wanna do, and I know that most of this board wants to do. Is we wanna make sure everything's, all the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, so that we may, you know, in the future, if something happens and y'all decide to step out and do your thing and walk on, Kelly, you go back to Kentucky or whatever, you know? That, if that happens, you know, the, the, the people that take it from y'all are bound by what agreements that y'all are making here today verbally, and then if you put them on paper, make sure that they're legally bound.
I believe we've, we've done that in our, in our, uh, PUD agreements.
And let me say on the backside of this, that's my personal dream again, I mean, my personal opinion is he.
Fair enough, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanna make sure that we've established that they, I'm sorry, my next one. All right, I just wanted to make sure that, um, we established there's not any more than thirty percent of the lots that are the park models, that's for sure, because it's in there. The only thing is that you've said that there is a limit to nine months, but we aren't limiting how many of those lots can be long-term like that, nine months, it's just, and we can't limit that. But, um, I just want to make sure that that's all correct.
So yes, so there is a maximum of thirty percent of the four hundred PUD park models. And the intention is the, um, maximum stay of nine months. Um, but yes, unfortunately, we can't, you can't say this one spot, you can only say in for a week, and it's, it's hard to manage that way.
Any other board members got any other question? Yes, Mr. Thomas.
Is there a way that we can say that the maximum stay is six months or less? Who, who determines the nine months?
I think that's what they're asking for.
They're, they're asking for nine, our code states six months, one hundred and eighty days.
Okay, so that's part of the variance they're asking for in what we're doing? Or that's part of, that's part of the PUD standards, correct?
So we are requesting a change in that from there.
Because, I, I mean, I, I've, I've gone to RV resorts and Wakava. There's an area in Wakava I would not let my son ride his bike down. Because they're all permanent residents, and it, it, it's just not appealing, and, and you're putting that in front of county. And these are the developers who's gonna run the place after. How long is the developer gonna stick around and, and rent this out? Or are they gonna sell it?
Do you want to go out and answer that? State your name again, please.
Matt McDaniel. Our intention is to hold it, but again, I would say that with the amount of money that's being invested in it, first, we are economically motivated to have a shorter-term, you know, tenancy, because that's where we really make all of our money. A longer-term tenancy, you know, can kind of pay the bills, but if, if, if you took this whole thing and went long-term tenancy, it probably wouldn't make economic sense to develop. And to say, again, when we're talking about, we went back to the pictures, I mean, we have high-level architects, we spent a lot of time on both the exterior design, the interior color scheme. I mean, we're, we're talking about bringing something that will be the best-looking project, and then what it costs to build that. We simply would never allow to have it be run down because it, it would be, it would be economically adverse to us. Um, and in the long run, I would say, you know, if, if it got sold to a company down the road, price that they would be paying for it would also be, you know, prohibitive. And, and part of what we fell in love with was Crystal Cove, you know, we, we think it's a beautiful piece of real estate, and the marina is beautiful. And that's why it makes sense for us, you know, to consider investing so much money, because we think, like, who would not want to be here, anyone who's been down to Crystal Cove, you know?
I, I've been down to Crystal Cove before the Redbirds and purchased it, and I, I have been actually owned a wave running. He would stay on his liverboard on weekends, and he would work and live in it out on weekdays. So there's your percentage of people, locals, that want to have fun, we work hard, we play hard. We would drop the wave runners in, and we would go out on the river and spend the night on the, on the, on the rent, you know, the hotel would have a van, and we'd stay the night on the boat. He was, I guess, getting ready to sell the property, and all the boats docks needed to be filled up, we needed to fill this place with people, so he let long-term people move in. And it was not a legal, um, their activities were not legal in, by any way, shape, or form. And the police were called nightly, and people were being arrested. John were being hauled off, drugs were being done, and, you know, it just wasn't a good, and when, when he moved in and the new owner purchased it, he had to get rid of all the dock trash. So, it, it, and he had to completely renovate, it made his job a lot harder, because what was used, you know, my husband sold the boat, he was like, I can't spend my weekend here. So, and that's what my concern is, is the long-term, nine months, that that, you know, that's a lot.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm going to speak to that, Charles, when you, when, I mean, nine months is, does seem like a long time. Um, but in, in fact, though, you have nine months, that's what you're, what you're bound to. Um, the places that you spoke of a minute ago, those people were permanent people, they moved in there, all those, those uh, places, and they were there permanently, that's where they live. So if you have at, at least a nine-month time limit, I think, I think that you're doing away with that permanent type what you're talking about living there. I, I mean, I just, I agree with you to a point.
Yeah.
Okay? Um, but I mean, I think that what they're talking about, I mean, this is my personal vision of what I see. Um, I don't, I don't see anything wrong with it, and I don't, I mean, you're taking, you're talking twenty, thirty million dollars you're investing here, is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
I mean, that's a lot of investment to put into that park and, and, and infrastructure and everything. And it would be, to me, it would be a good thing for what I could have, like I say, cause there's a lot of, we all know this, sitting up here in the board. There's a lot of RVers that, that use, that come in and they would use the Palatka, they would, the Publix and everything like that. And I can't agree totally with eleven trips a day. Um, and then, you know, and some, some of those things I don't personally agree with. The park itself, I mean.
We need it. It's, it's a good thing.
I, I mean, I've seen it.
Yeah.
You know, but I just want to make sure, like I said a minute ago, you feel it applies exactly what, you know, what you're saying. I, I mean, I'm all the i's dotted in this piece of law.
Yes. So in the, the P U D documents, you know, the, the maximum park model during there is, they are restricted to that. The, uh, think the stay is in agreement as well, right?
How big is, I, I didn't look, I didn't know, see it, but how big is the park model you're talking about putting in there?
Uh. You know, three ninety-nine square feet, you can answer.
Well, I'm just, let's say, that, answer me this.
A two, one?
How long, how, how long are they? What's the max?
So, so, so.
Name?
Matt McDaniel.
Hey, Matt.
Um, three hundred ninety-nine square feet is the maximum that a park model can be. Cause a park model is technically a vehicle.
Right.
And so that is the standard, thirty feet, seven feet deep? Oh, in that area. And four hundred square feet, um. Well, you know, I, I honestly, I don't know the answer. Ten, you know, ten feet wide by forty feet deep plus or minus.
You're right.
Yeah.
Square feet. Okay. Um, so that'd be a normal size, a larger size of a bay.
Yeah.
Um, as to chair two, to your point, uh, I think one thing we didn't talk about is the management of the resort.
Indeed.
Um, they're going to hire a third party consultant who specializes in running RV resorts.
So they'll have management of it. There won't be a, on top of it.
Correct. So they'll be paying a third party company whose job is to monitor the stay and make sure the park is clean. You know, all that sort of aspects from a management standpoint. So they'll be designated to that.
I just, uh.
Our family has had, started from a class C all the way up to, uh, very expensive RVs. I didn't own them. They were expensive. My in-laws did. But I got nothing invested in them. I also bought horses as well as a living quarter. And, uh, my father-in-law, when he bought the RV, I said, you could have bought two condos on San August. For that RV. And, uh, so the class of people that you see, it's not like, it's not the gypsies coming to, coming to town.
Yeah.
It is people that have had the ability to go stay and, and spend the money to buy a nice RV in most cases.
Yes.
So it's, it's a different class of people than it was even twenty years ago. Definitely, they're coming to the park and where they go and, and what we've seen them. And sometimes when we're not going to a horse show, I pull my horse trailer that has an eighteen foot living quarter. That's a thirty-two foot trailer. An eighteen foot of his living quarter. And you just see a lot of, and there's a lot of great people there. And so it's just, it's a different world than it was twenty years ago.
Mr. Ross?
Ryan.
I, I'm back though.
Well, do y'all have any other questions? Could we be disappointed or could we be?
Yes.
To your concern, Mr. Chair, the items that we all have been discussing are in writing in the documents. And it's a good written as well.
I think we, right now, we'd be too forward. We'd be too advanced. All right. I'm going to open this up to anybody else that wants to speak to. Egypt?
Okay. I think from kitchens, ten twenty-seven South Plum Street, correct Florida. I'm not forgetting their RV form. I think it sounds very good. However, I do have some concerns. I think the home, the rest one of them. Four hundred and fifty, uh, units equals a minimum of nine hundred people. Eleven trips a day? Okay. So let's say if they only make eleven trips a day, then that doesn't coincide with then helping to develop Palatka and going to Palatka shopping. Eleven trips a day isn't going to develop anything or help Palatka at all. You can't have it both ways. I think it's going to be more than eleven trips, which I have no problem with that. But I think you all need to know that it's going to be more than eleven. And if they're going, if they, one of the things that weren't there, the things they tuned in for, uh, getting the park was, you know, it's like economically developed Palatka. Cause people are going to be coming to Palatka and shopping, wanting to public. No, now if you're doing eleven trips a day and you got nine hundred people, assuming it's two people per unit. So I have an issue with that. I think that needs to be clarified. They're saying eleven, we know it's going to be more than eleven, but I'd like it to be in same, same eleven we know better. The other thing is you are the board. If you have concerns, you, in writing, you can change the put and add things or subtract things that you think need to be done. Now as far as the, uh, nine months, no. Why do I say no? Because our city code says a hundred and eighty days. That's six months. So if I do an RV park and I don't do a project, I stuck to six months. These guys get nine months. Not fair. Change it to six months. Everybody happy, they comply with the code. They're not going to lose any money. They're going to make money. They may lose a couple of dollars here and there, but they're not going to lose any money. But having six months, things opposed to a nine month, that's getting real. So if you have a concern about what I do, then change the put and make it a hundred eighty days instead of nine months. And knowing your mind, it's going to be more than eleven trips regardless of what they said. Peak trips, peak trips aren't going to major traffic in Palatka. It's the everything trips. Look at River Street, look at Curry Street, look at Laurel Street. Anyway, you have the right as the board to put the restrictions on that put and make sure that the restrictions you want to do, the things you're concerned about, go into the put because I think it's not, it's not a reference. If it's not in the put, it's not going to be done. So if you want something in that put and you want something changed, don't be wishy-washy about it. Have a change it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kids. Uh, as far as eleven trips a day, I mean, there's, there's more. There's more, we all know, there's more trucks and stuff that come down Comfort Road. And that was my question for them about coming out of where we're going to come out of Comfort Road. Um, just because, I mean, that, that road was built for traffic. Um, that's just my personal opinion. Um, anybody else would like to speak? Okay. Hang on just a minute.
David McDaniel, the redevelopment. Um, so with regard to the, to the traffic question, I, I, I personally think I can explain it in a way that will make sense. And we'll, we'll put it into context. So, uh, peak trips are the time when you're going to work and coming home from work. So it's the, I don't know the exact time to call it eight to nine o'clock or seven thirty to nine o'clock. And then likewise from four until six o'clock. Those are the peak traffic hours. And if you're in an RV, first of all, check in won't be until ten, eleven o'clock. Checkout's going to be four o'clock. So the, the bulk of the activity that will be in terms of the RVs in and out are going to be happening, happening outside of the peak traffic times. So certainly there's going to be a lot more cars and RVs coming in and out of the site. The question is, is it going to impact the places where you bottleneck? And bottlenecks occur during times when people are coming in and out of work. So if you're in an RV, you're on vacation, you're not going to work. That's what, that's where that number comes from. Again, I understand the confusion and I'm, and eleven sounds like an incredibly low number. But I, I think that, uh, the transportation modeling that Chris records was, helps explain it. And I think hopefully I put a little bit more explanation that will make sense for y'all.
So just, just to elaborate on that, sorry. The statistic shared of eleven trips per day is eleven average trips during peak hours?
Yes.
It's, uh, they don't really call it the average. They just call it the peak. Um, so you don't have, uh, you know, the average day, you, you, uh, collective group, you have this average going. The peak is from, uh, four PM to six PM and then seven AM. That's, you know, seven AM to nine AM. And that is the most trips that you will see produced in those two time periods, that's a lot of it. So it, it may be lower than eleven, but it won't, based on statistics, it won't be more than the amount that, that's period.
Fair enough.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak this? Seeing them, um, I've heard this back from folks speaking to the board. Um, does the board have any questions? Um, we'll, we. What we're talking about between us?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Your turn.
I just got a question. Um, being a non-camper, I, I'm hearing a lot of objections to length of time when folks are able to stay. And, and I'm trying to understand, I guess, I, I, we don't want permanent residents and, and the nine months obtains that. Um, and if the city has pre-existing ordinances, then, you know, maybe we need to look into that. But, but I guess from a, a grander scheme, what's the difference in Earl staying there six months and Edie staying there six months or Earl staying there nine months and Edie staying there three months? You, you've got a space that you had assumed that's filled. Um, again, the, the goal being to eliminate permanent residents, I, I respect that. But is there really a big difference between six months and eight months or eight months and nine months? Um. I, I don't know. So I guess that's a general question.
Is, is the, is the, the, is the body of the, of the developers, uh, are y'all leaving that to nine months expecting some uh, campers to come from the shutdowns of the mill and the, uh, electric plants and stuff like that? Are y'all strictly relying on, um, residents coming in snowbirds?
Yeah. The intention of the nine months is for the snowbirds, um, based on their, uh.
Migration.
Migration. Yes. Also the study that they've done at other RV resorts, those are thinking of the late states, states that they've seen from President Trump or anything of that.
Ross?
The answer changed a little bit. Um, as a weekend camper, family camper with younger kids. Um, if you were going to not be a camper, just let's go as a family to a hotel. Are you going to go to a hotel, book hotel that pool? This one is a long-term hotel monthly and this one is by the night. This one's going to be more expensive by the night and this long-term one's going to be cheaper for monthly routes. But the types of people that stay in these, you've got workers in this one and you've got vacationers in this one. You've got families in this one and you've got a room full of them. What are you going to subject your campers and family to? Do you want them to be in a hotel where these guys are going to get up at the crack of dawn to go pick the field or work the mill or whatever they're going to do? Or are you going to have a vacation and sleep in and go on the river and have a resort feeling? That's the difference in clientele that we're working with, that I'm trying to break up. So I think nine months is way too long. If a snowbird is going to come and stay, they're going to come and stay six months and go home. Or they're going to come and stay a little bit here and a little bit over there and then go home.
I guess I'm not understanding it. If Earl moves in next morning and works the mill and leaves at six in the morning, comes home at six in the night, that's a perfect neighbor.
Earl's not going to do that though. Earl's going to have four of his working buddies that are hired by a bigger company. They're a huge, they're a hired group of people. They, as employees and they come and there's going to be four people. How many beds are these?
So.
Four hundred square feet.
So if I, if I bring my wife and two kids, it's four people.
Okay. So that you have split four?
It depends on the RV, I guess. It's three to three to four.
The park model.
Four, six, eight. My RV splits, splits eight. You got GP. If I'm GP and I'm hiring it for a crew of laborers, I'm going to get eight guys to sleep in that RV. Next to your family of four in an RV, we only sleep three in RV, but it can sleep up to eight. So GP's going to get their money worth and, and have all of the eight people.
So if you have eight family members that want to stay the weekend with you, they're supposed to tell you no?
No. If I have eight family members, I'm going to tell them to rent a couple cabins and I'm going to be in my RV.
That's just, that's a threat and we can't moderate.
I know, but you can moderate it if you say the long-term stay of one to six months.
Okay. Well, what's, what's to prevent you from renting for six months and then you six months it up and you, you on the boat and pull out of camp ground and pull back in and we're going to set up space for another six months or eight? None of it.
There's something about that. You can.
So you have to be gone at night.
But again, the target audience is not, uh, for these type of residents are not. The, uh, construction workers or the workers that are coming in for those sort of things. Uh, my father-in-law is actually an electrician who travels. Um, you know, he's in Georgia staying at, um, actually he's staying at a, um, a mobile home park because he is there for years at a time. Um, and so this would be something that based on the price point, those type of employees and companies would not want to pay that type of monthly payment, um, for those workers. Um, and, you know, to that too, from experience with my father-in-law, most people they do is, I mean, they're adults that want to have their own space. So they're not praying for six people. He's like to buy himself on his own RV. It's actually a fifth wheel in a mobile home park. Um, it is cheaper than a hotel. Um, but again, the clientele vision and marketing is for the retiree with an RV, not construction workers coming in and staying for, uh, six or eight months.
Now we're looking at, I mean, the, the, just to generalize and compare, you're looking at something like what over Keystone Heights. Am I not wrong?
Maybe cover them out.
I'm just saying, yeah, sir, it compares. Okay. Yeah, miss. Okay. So in comparison, looking at that, as I see you guys, I go by it, as I, um, stop there, the, the restaurant, eat, look out upon the, um, contest of wagons.
Kind of study wagons.
Listen, I'm just a full country boy. And the, the wagons they have out there is park model. I mean, you know, that, that's kept up pretty well and it's, it's, it's got a lot of, I mean, and, and you're, you're talking about a river. I mean, we all know what that river's value is to us. And, and bringing these people to them. And I'm not, I'm not being the Chamber of Commerce here. I'm just, you know, I, I can see what that, that could be. Um, and, and, and you know, gone, we camp together many times and you, you see that, you see the, I, I, I see the side of, I went with that other place. Um, you know, I, but I also see the, the value of the home or the, the, uh, RVs that come in there, uh, you know, mine's forty feet, you know, and, and it gets to sleep a lot. But I, I just, you know. But, but I do, I have my great kids running on that and everything like that. But I, I just, I don't. The time period kind of concerns me too. I mean, the nine months.
That's the only thing. Can you, can you look at a present? I mean.
Yeah, we, we won't do that further.
How, how, how bad will it hurt y'all if we did? Is it really going to make that big of a difference?
Matt McDaniel, it won't make that big of a difference. It mean, the only reason, the only reason we asked for that is on another project that we have. Um, we had gotten advised by our consultants is that snowbirds they're seeing in the industry in Florida, is it snowbirds are staying longer and longer? Uh, really starting with COVID. And, and so they advised us a while back. They said, if you want to be really safe, most people are six months or less. The vast majority are six months or less. But they were advising us to ask for more time just to be safe if someone wanted to, you know, stay a little bit longer. But if it's an issue for the city, it's not the end of the world for us. So we're, we're not trying to.
Six months of the whole Atlantic snowboard?
Mm-hmm. I, I would say six months would probably cover, you know, ninety, ninety-five percent. Um, and.
The bar. Just, just to piggyback on you. Is there a difference between six months and nine months?
Three.
I, I mean, so, so what's the big deal? I mean, why, why are we trying to? I mean, these, these folks are having an impact on our community. They are going to public regardless of whatever the trip study says. I mean, they've got to get through it somewhere. Um, you know, this is drastically increasing our tax basis. Um, you know, so those, those folks that want to stay seven months instead of six are an asset to the community. And is it really making that big of a difference?
As far as quality, you know, nine months is not amazing. As far as quality, you know, nine months is not going to make it a migrant camp. You know, six months, nine months, what's?
That's where, I agree.
That's what the other folks think in our other project is they realize the difference, you know, to give us the time we wanted. It didn't really change. So that's why we asked for, we're not trying to be greedy. We just have a long-term business plan and we want to make sure that we have the latitude to execute that business plan.
And can I ask that, and I doubt you know the answer off the top of your head. Do you know why we set six-month ordinance previously? Was there any data or statistics or metrics that we base that opinion on?
Mr. Wallace, go ahead.
Somebody thought it was a good idea.
But I think, I think, I think also was, in one of.
Me, that's being honest.
Well, Mr. Wallace, if you're trying to remember correctly, we're talking donuts to bagels now. Um, when, one of the things, when I first came on the board, you were talking about the, 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 uh, what'd you call them? When we call it the bed breakfast, the houses, the flop houses. You didn't want to see things become flop houses.
No, bed and breakfast are not flop houses. What we had in the North Historic District and the South Historic District where you took a historic home and split it into eight apartments with eight non-desirables in it, that's a flop house.
And that's how that, that's how that came about, Jack. I mean, it was before me being on the board, it was when even, even, um, some of the others before us.
The six months never passed my list.
I didn't say it didn't, I was asking, you know.
In comparison with the six and nine months, if you give the opportunity to stay nine months, you're going to have more nine months stairs. If you don't give them the opportunity and they know they can actually even six months, then, you know, leave in six months. If when you're staying nine months, you're going to have a high, it doesn't matter, you're going to be going to the store and then you're going to see Dollar Tree and then you're going to see all of these other stores. And you're going to have, uh, more than, your impact is going to be greater.
Yeah, so I mean, yes, again, if there is a discontent with, between the board members, I mean, we're fine with following the code with six months.
Well, here's what I'm going to say.
And let me say one thing, my youngest daughter, she lives on the coast in Oregon, she just moved out there. She's got, she lives on airstream. She's got two campgrounds that she alternates between one's six months and one is nine months. The nine months one is nicer than the six month. So that, that, you know, which always that, but it, with the, no, nobody's mentioned the money and what these people are going to be.
Well, they haven't mentioned the money, as far as.
No, twenty-five million.
Yes.
But with what they've got to charge to make this thing go, you're not going to have a bunch of vagrants and such in there, whether it's nine months or six months. That's your girl's opinion, I should have one earlier.
If that, if it's okay, but just conceding to the six months and there's something to discuss it for them.
I was, what I was going to suggest was that we go ahead, if I can hear it, in, uh, a motion. Do how you want it to be with the phone, any difference with the phone, whatever you like that. Make it second, let's vote on it.
Do we have three different, what are we trying, we want to have three different things?
Two.
Mr. Board.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I would like to make a motion that we approved amendment of the future land use map from industrial, residential, low to commercial, or excuse me, and commercial to recreational be approved. This is the part that I get ready. Uh, so I'll make the exception on the next one.
Yep. I have a motion in a second, I don't have a second. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, you say aye.
Aye.
The pose. Being, everything went off, what we needed to get. Okay, now we're working on, which one are we working on?
At the second half.
Do you need to overlay? It's up on the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that probably just did it.
Whatever, there are two components, land use and recovery.
Okay, that's it then, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the request to rezon from light industrial, central, commercial and residential multifamily to the planning and development, recreation and open space, uh, as presented with the one exception that, uh, tenants be limited to a six-month stay as per our prior code.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller. Mr. Martin, motion. Mr. Miller, second. Do I hear, I don't know, do I hear? All those in favor, you say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimed? That's an hour and a half, our time will never get back. Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Don't make this hard.
Hour and a half and three months.
All right, let's get it going.
There's a further second.
Yeah, I didn't even notice that.
That's what I, that's what I would go with. I didn't, I didn't think that was that, it was, um, Ms. Wall, uh, this.
Is, 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 uh, they were going to come back before us?
No, I would go on to the commission.
Have you worked all that out or are y'all in the process?
As far as.
As far as restrictions and what, what they can do and what they can't.
That's all in here, except for that condition that Mr. Barnes added. Except for the condition that Mr. Barnes added about the name to stay, everything else is in the document.
So it is as, if I read it earlier today?
Yes.
No chance.
Except that they stay.
Yeah.
And it should go before the commission at the second meeting in April. So I think it's a twenty-seven.
In order for them to approve, they can tear it up if they want.
That's correct.
But it, it reads in Earl's opinion, it, it's going to be nice.
The things that we've talked about every.
Please. Anybody have another question?
Hurry.
Didn't you pee yesterday? Five minutes for Ms. Wilson to use her syllabus. I want that put into the air. Well, I'm kind of getting out of my head. Uh, Ms. Wall, will you take us into PV case, according to degree dash zero six, please?
Mr. McCarron, this is a request to annex one parcel approximately a half acre inside. Into the municipal act with the purpose of connecting to the city's water and sewer systems. They are requesting to amend the future land use map from Putnam County Urban Service to City of Palaka Commercial and rezoned from Putnam County General Light Commercial, which is C two, to City of Palaka Intensive Commercial, which is also C two. This is, uh, I want to let you know that those parcels surrounding it are essentially commercial in future land use and zoning natures, even, uh, whether or not they are inside the city limits.
Where is this property located?
It's west of US nineteen on Reed Street. It's right next to the driveway, going coming out of Lowe's on Reed Street.
Is that where they had like?
The little buildings that had the.
Leotard's had it for sale before, but I think they had consignment shop.
Yes.
It was that consignment shop.
Right, right.
Staff is analyzing in accordance with our, um, comp plan and knowing full and recommends approval.
Okay. I guess there's nobody here in the, wants to speak to that. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
If you're ready, sir.
I'm ready.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that, uh, we approve the request to annex, uh, this, this parcel into the city.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion, do you have it unanimously? Is there anything further?
Do we have to rezone?
There's three parts.
I'm glad you don't keep me, keep me, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, uh, move that we approve the request to amend the future land use map from Putnam County Urban Services to City of Palaka Commercial.
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I have it unanimously.
Chair, if I may, I'd like to request that we approve the request to rezon from Putnam County General Light Commercial, C two, to City of Palaka Intensive Commercial, C two.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Aye. Second.
Second. All those in favor, say the father thing, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I have had it unanimously. Is there any further, now, is there any further business coming forward before this?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Um, this is Valeria Thomas, this is going to be my last meeting with the, um, the board. And so I just wanted to tell you how much I have enjoyed working with you. And I'm going to miss these, um, early, uh, month meetings with the planning board. And, uh, we will see each other around in town, I'll still be here, I'm not leaving Putnam County or anything like that.
We're sorry for you, John, this time, but we understand you want to help off into your retirement. So make it a big, broad, big horse that you're riding on, okay?
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Stone.
All right.
Do we have any further business?
I do, uh, uh, we have a blight to bright community meeting on April twentieth at Price Martin Center at six o'clock. And that is to get the message out to the community that we are working on code enforcement. And we are using it under sunshine, so two or more board members can be present.
Okay.
What, what time is this?
Six o'clock. At the Price Martin Center, April twentieth.
Yeah, we're the right is. That actually, that, that's why officers, there are things cleaned up and they're very, very proud of it.
I don't know if you, I don't know if you saw the article in the paper that there were, uh, there were approximately twelve sites that were chosen as the most dire, in most dire need, in most dire need of, uh, code enforcement actions. Um, and, and those sites were spread all over the city.
Does it mean they're going to get cleaned up, like leveled, cleaned up, put it in a dumpster and take it off? Or they're going to fix it up?
Well, that's a.
Either or.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Barnes?
I was going to ask, are they going to, did they list those sites?
Right, yeah.
Yes, it is.
Where they, it's, sorry.
And the one that took, I think they took off from Central Kendra?
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, like the little houses that they're fixing up around the little, they didn't fill lots with the little houses that they've been, uh, remodeling and fixing, those look nice. It makes the, you know, and it's like you see a couple here and then there'll be one pop up there and there's one around the corner from Mall, because it, uh, really, I thought next time they win, they was going to fall in. And they added a room and they, uh, they, you know, it's, it's nice. And they do it with the period, you know, it's not stucko and everything else.
Any further business, any further comments, Mr. Barnes?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we adjourn.
We can do adjourn, we can adjourn.
I call that place a rag car, that was not a derogatory comment. If you've been by there, they got all of these racks of dress going in the wind.